We go. All right, yeah, buddy, I'm back at it again. This is round two of Be The Voice, Be The Change Town Hall meeting, and I am so glad to have this group of distinguished gentlemen with me. I'd like to say some black excellence if I will, okay, on the screen right now. I'm gonna let everybody go ahead and introduce yourself. I'm glad that you guys could be here for round two of this, by the way. Thank you for being here. Dee, go ahead and start with yourself.
Well, I'm Dee Smith. You know, I was here last week. I'm gonna be here every week. I'm your unofficial co-host representing one body ENT seven one nine nine. How's everybody doing?
Doctor?
I'm Dr. Nathaniel Granger Jr., immediate past president of APA Division Thirty Two Society for Humanistic Psychology, founder and director of Be Real Ministries here in Colorado Springs. And all of my work is predicated on social justice and multiculturalism and diversity. And so I'm so happy, I'm pumped to be here.
Thanks for being here, man.
Yeah, my name is Rodney Galette. I'm an Air Force veteran. Go Air Force. I'm a certified ethical hacker. I own Firma IT Solutions, so I'm a small business owner. I'm also the president of the Colorado Springs Black Business Network. And on July one, I'll be the first black president of the Rotary Club of Colorado Springs, which is the first Rotary Club established in Colorado Springs over a hundred years ago. So we got work to do. Thanks for having me on the show.
Nice. Mr. Exum?
Hi, Tony Exum, Senior State Representative, Office of sixteen. A longtime resident of Colorado Springs, retired firefighter, and happy to be with you today. Thanks for the invitation.
Thank you guys for being here. That's a nice panel we got here today. I'm hyped up. I get, I, last week I had on my glasses, I was getting emotional listening to, listening to the ladies talk. So if you see me look away, just because I'm getting hyped up, man, I'm getting, I, I, I'm, I'm already getting there right now. Uh, so we're just gonna start it off like this. We got a bill that passed the other day. We have somebody here that helped pass that board, correct? Uh, Mr. Exum, can you tell us a little bit about the bill that just got passed the other day?
Hello, uh, thanks, thanks for asking. It's Senate Bill, uh, two seventeen. And it's a Police Accountability and Integrity Act. And what, what it does, it enhances law enforcement integrity and provide several provisions for increased transparency and accountability for law enforcement. And I'll just, I'll just go through kind of the highlights of, of the bill. Uh, among the provisions, it's a mandate on body cameras. Requires officers to wear body cameras and, and record interactions with members of the public that have potential for enforcement. And the footage of the incident misconduct will be released to the public within twenty-one days. It also requires the public reporting on policing. Law enforcement agencies would be required to track, publicly report data for any contact they initiate for law enforcement purposes. Uh, it, it reins in the use of deadly force by officers. It brings the Colorado law in line with the Supreme Court. Holding that an officer may, may only use deadly force, including on someone who's fleeing from the police when there's imminent risk of danger to human life. And it also prevents the rehiring of bad actors. If an officer is convicted or pleaded guilty for any inappropriate use of physical force, their post certification would be revoked. And it also holds individual officers liable for their actions. And it restricts the use of chemical agents and projectiles. That's kind of off the top of my view, uh, of, of the bill. But, uh, those that are interested can get the text of the bill. They can go on to leg, L E G dot Colorado dot gov. And just click on, uh, find the bill, and it'd be Senate Bill twenty dash two seventeen.
That sounds like there's a lot of good stuff in that bill.
Last thing I would say is that, uh, out of the hundred legislators, eighty-six voted in favor of it.
That's good stuff. Congratulations. That's, that's a big bill, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
It's a signature piece of legislation for the decade, I believe. Yes, indeed.
Uh, and on my post today, I, uh, uh, for my flyer for this, I told people that Colorado is like leading, leading the nation in change right now. Like, we are doing, we're, we're doing some stuff out here, man. We're like, people aren't being quiet, and it's good that laws are being passed and people are recognizing what's going on right now. Um, I, I have to ask this question before, too. Who were, we were talking about mentors last week. Like, it's always good for you to have somebody, a mentor. Who were some people that got you into what you do today? But this is a question for everybody.
Um, my mom, so I grew up in Georgia, about twenty minutes north of Atlanta. And my mother grew up in Collins, Mississippi, and my father grew up in Tuskegee, Alabama. So I grew up in the South. Um, been called nigger a lot growing up. And, you know, my mother is a corporate juggernaut. So she, um, she works for Emory Healthcare. And she's an author, so if you're studying nursing and you Google my mother's name, Mary Galette, like, you're gonna see her all over your first five or eight pages of Google. Like, she's pretty, she's pretty big time. So she got me, um, comfortable with being in rooms where I'm overwhelmingly outnumbered by people that don't look like me. So I am comfortable working in that space and being my authentic self and being able to make change and gain trust in that space to change things for other people. So as a military member and as a veteran now, I have been able to live in like four or five different communities. That's four or five different black communities. Uh, I came here from Key West, Florida, and, you know, as soon as I touch down, I'm ready to find out how I can, you know, I analyze, I see what is here, I see what's maybe missing and what I can be a part of to help. And then I start getting to work. And then I start making friends while I'm in the street doing that work, and I start working with them to make even bigger change. So, you know, it's, it's been, um, it's been a formula for success. Um, especially since I've been here. I've been here four years and been able to accomplish quite a bit, and I'm not done yet. I'm just warming up. So, you know, I, I, I find my inspiration in my ancestors. Um, very aware that they had to die, they had to get beaten, they had to get raped, they were enslaved. I mean, list goes on. And that was all to afford me the opportunity to be on this call with you right now and talk about this issue. It afforded all of us the opportunity to be here right now. So I, I feel like I have an obligation to, to change the way things are and not let the status quo sit the way it is. And I have the tools and the resources to do it. Um, my ancestors didn't have these tools, so, you know, now I can take advantage of them. So thanks, brothers, for, for having me on this call, man. This is, this is part of the work, you know?
Appreciate you being here. If you see me looking down, I'm taking notes of some of the stuff that you guys are saying. Go ahead, Doctor.
Yes, I, I would say my, uh, my, my, my number one mentor, I mean, I have so many, um, from, from ancestors to, to the ones I remember, great-grandmother, grandmother. But my, my, my greatest mentor would have to be my dad, my late dad, uh, Nathaniel Granger Senior, who I was embarrassed to have him as a dad because growing up in inner-city Chicago in the, in the ghetto that I grew up in, uh, I wanted to be just like the other kids who didn't have a dad. And so I was one of the only kids on the block who had a dad, and, you know, as kids, we want to be like everybody else. So I was ashamed that I actually had a dad. And my dad would come home from work, and, and soon as he hit the door, he would scream out to his three sons, "Say it loud." And we would say, "Oh, Dad is tripping again," but we knew what he meant. He would say, "Say it loud," and my brothers and I would scream out, "I'm black and I'm proud. I'm black and I'm proud." And that instilled such a hope in me, such a, such a, a pride that even when societal injunctions would come against me to knock me down, to, to tell me that you would never amount to nothing, that resonated with me, to say it loud, "I'm black and I'm proud." I held on to that. And so I have to say my dad truly, uh, God bless his soul, uh, was, was, was my greatest mentor.
That is great. That's cool.
Yeah, uh, you know, unfortunately, I didn't, uh, I didn't know my dad very well. Grew up without him, uh, grew up with a stepdad. Had some challenges, but we, uh, we worked those out later in life. But I would say, uh, the mentor that I, that I cling to when I was growing up was my older brother, Dr. Wade Exum. And the reason he was a mentor to me is that, uh, he's three years older than I am. So he kind of blazed a trail for me to follow. And one in particular, I remember when I followed him in high school, uh, he had just graduated and I came in as a sophomore. And he left such big footsteps to follow that for a long time, people didn't know my name was Tony. They just knew I was Wade's little brother. And, uh, you know, I, and at first as a sophomore, you know, I wanted to be my own person. And I pushed back against that, but it didn't take very long to, to realize that he was not only a, a, a good person in society, he was a A student, a three-time letter in football, basketball, and baseball, uh, president of the student body. And, uh, and so why, why do I say that? Why, why was that important? Because the expectations for me were higher. I didn't come into high school with low expectation because of my older brother. He had set the stage, had set the standard. And so the expectation that the teachers and the administrators have had of me was, uh, you need to be, you need to be like your brother. You can be your own person, but he kind of set the standard for you to follow.
That is dope. That is dope. All right, so I, so I have a question. Everybody, they, I keep hearing the people talking about, uh, uh, defunding the police. And some people don't really understand what that means. Can you guys break that down for the people? Because I know a lot of people think that that means just taking away the, the police for good, like not having a police, a police station or anything like that. I, I don't believe that's what that is. Could anybody break that down, like, for, for myself or other people at home?
So I'll start with it. Um, I don't know if that whole defund thing is, is the right thing. But what I do know is that keeping stuff the same hasn't been working, and we need to do something different. Now, do I know what the right answer is from a large scale? I don't know. I am hyper-focused on the community I'm living in right now, which is Colorado Springs, okay? So right now, what we have on the table is this whole police accountability thing that they're trying to do. And, um, they had a city council meeting on it yesterday, and it passed the first read, eight to one. Um, Yolanda Billa was the only naysayer in it, and she had a reason for doing that. Um, there is, um, um, a system called the Citizens Review Board, right? And when I was living in Key West, Florida, um, I had the opportunity to serve on that board over there. So I was appointed by the dais and the mayor and them to be on this board. So what we did here was that we fielded the complaints from the citizens against the Key West Police Department. And there's an organization called NA cole, N A C O L E dot org. And they have the whole blueprint on how to set this up in your community. So it was, it was mind-boggling to me why it was, why it seemed to be so hard to set this up here. So I had sent, um, the twenty-fourteen annual report to the city council. I had sent the application that I had to fill out to be on that board in Key West, the city council. I had sent them the website. Um, I didn't hear back, but when I'm, I'm looking at what they're trying to create right now, it doesn't seem to be that model. And the most important, one of the important things about that model, um, about the, the Citizens Review Board model from, from NA cole or whatever is that, um, it has the power, okay, and the authority, both of those things, to hold the police accountable. This thing they're trying to set up right now doesn't have that. That's a problem. So I'm like, what are we doing right now? It's, it's not even gonna fix any issues. So, for example, um, we would be able to contact the Department of Justice, tell them about an issue that we're having down here, and they would pick up that case and deal with it. So the thing that they're doing right now isn't gonna have the teeth to do that. If we wanted to see body cam footage for a particular incident that a citizen had a complaint about, the police department would give us that footage. If we wanted to see information on our police officer, like how many misconducts they had and all these write-ups, they would give it to us. We had the authority to get all those things we asked for and to make up determination and hold, um, the police department accountable. And that was to build trust between the community and the police department. So that's what we're dealing with here locally. Uh, I'm really trying to be like, I don't know, like a, an advisor thing or whatever, to try to help us try to figure this out. I live in Fountain, so I wouldn't be able to serve on that, that board they're making in Colorado Springs. But, you know, I just wanted to be a, a voice of reason for it, because I, from what I'm seeing, it's not going in the right direction for the change that we need, and that, that concerns me.
Go ahead, Uncle T.
Yeah, I, I, I would agree, uh, I would agree with that, and I, I would just add that, uh, I, I agree with NA cole too and the work that they, uh, the work that they do in helping cities and counties of, of policy around, uh, law enforcement oversight. So, uh, an advisory board, I, I agree is not going to do that. It's not gonna have any teeth. It's just a, a, a feel-good thing. But I, I, I would say too that the, the Senate Bill, Senate Bill two seventeen, uh, although it's not, uh, a local, uh, Oversight Commission, I think the, uh, the, the provisions in the bill that I discussed with you earlier, it's gonna serve as some oversight for all law enforcement throughout the state of Colorado, including El Paso County and, and the city of Colorado Springs.
Awesome. What, what do you think, what do you think that we can do now? Or we can start doing right now to start immediate change or push change forward out here in the Springs?
You know, one of the, one of the things, uh, that I believe, well, several things. First of all, we, we have to get in touch with where we come from. We have to look at, we have to look at the historical implications of, um, uh, of, of structural racism and, and, and how it has impacted the, the black community. Me being a psychologist, I am a proponent for, for, for men, mental health. And we, as a black people, have been scarred emotionally and psychologically, psychologically to the extent that we don't even know how, how, how damaged we are. You know, a, a phenomenological inquiry relative to the value of, of the black life, it has remained paramount in, in, for African-Americans in the United States since the first Africans landed in Jamestown, Virginia in sixteen nineteen. It's been, it's, we, we've constantly been trying to figure out where we stand, who we are, what do we do? So as, as a people, we really need to push, uh, educating one another. And I, that's why I'm so passionate about this, this, this forum here. We have to know where we came from. We have to understand the implications of, of what has, of, 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 of what this society, what's, what this, uh, uh, structural racism has done. When I saw, uh, uh, the footage of, of George Floyd, uh, I didn't wait so much with my eyes, I, I wept with my soul. Uh, it was a, it was a, it was a soul weep that was, uh, it, it, it was, it was, it was combined with, with generations of, of, of pain. And, and so, um, uh, you know, we have to, we have to somehow, somehow, people, we have to deal with that pain. I know people have come against those who are rioting, those who are looting, you know? Martin Luther King said that rioting is the voice of the unheard. And, 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 and people feel that they are unheard. We have been dealing with this invisibility, and I don't want to get on a tangent here. Black people have remained invisible. It's time for us to make this invisibility visible, make the invisible whatever is invisible. We need to bring this stuff out. You know, yes, we are angry, but angry is a secondary emotion to pain. Why are we angry? Because we've been hurting for several generations. And so in America, even in Colorado Springs, you know, with Devon Bailey, you know, the message, the message is still very clear that black lives do not matter. And, 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 and so we have to keep pushing this thing, get our voices out there, give voice back to those who don't have a voice, because many of us are, are languaging in the corners of our society, voiceless. And so, uh, uh, platforms like this, man, I say push it all the way. Um, and so I, I, I do want to say this, there is a, a, a statement that was put out by the Association of Black Psychologists called "Our protest is our, our breath." This statement, and I've looked at several statements, I'm working on a manifesto right now for the Southern Christian Leadership Conference to deliver to the mayor and the governor. But this, this particular statement is a manifesto within itself called "Our protest is our breath." And man, this thing, I, I, I submit to you to go to, uh, uh, AP side, uh, website, and, uh, this thing lists demands for not only the black people, but for the government. It lists demands for how our society is to move about and navigate through, um, uh, 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 dealing with this structural racism.
That reminds me of-
I have that website available.
That reminds me of that, of, uh, what you said earlier. You said, uh, I can't remember. Yeah, refresh my mind on your quote that you said earlier.
Yes, sir. Man, if we, and that's, that's the thing, too. It, it is, it, there's no time for complacency, there's no time for apathy. Uh, yes, we are tired. We get tired. But as a black people, we've been tired. And, and, and as I said earlier, I'm exhausted. I've been black all day long. And so a black man, as a black man, man, I'm, I'm working when I'm not working. And so I might as well work, put the work in, you know, because either way, whether I, whether I sit on my butt or whether I put the work in, I'm still working because I'm carrying, I'm carrying the, I'm, I'm carrying the generational work of picking cotton, being whipped. I'm picking the generational hurt of, of being a slave. I'm carrying this pain. So I'm carrying the work. So I'm very exhausted. So we gotta keep on pushing, man.
Uh, uh, Tony, Tony Exum, I appreciate you, uh, being here, even though we was having technical difficulties. Just wanted everybody at home to know, we appreciate you being there on the phone. Dee, you're doing great work over there, all right?
You know, co-hosting.
Let me just weigh in on, uh, on, on what, what the doctor, the doctor said, uh, uh, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna read a quote from, uh, an interview that, uh, that Anderson Cooper had with, uh, Trevor Noah. And Trevor Noah said, he said, "For so long, the country is becoming a world where people are forced to see the truth of America where we live." And I'll take that a little bit further, that God is showing, he has a mirror, uh, and he's saying, "America, this is what you look like. You can no longer hide behind how you feel. You can no longer hide behind capes. You can no longer hide behind hoods. You can no longer hide behind what's, what's in your heart because the truth is coming out." And with that, I, I believe we need, you know, more pillars of justice in the community. And when I say pillars, pillars of justice, I mean pillars of justice in the community, pillars of justice in law enforcement, pillars of justice in education, in housing, in economic equity, in our churches on Wall Street, in our homes and our marriages, and certainly in the courthouse. Because we had pillars of, of justice, you know, years ago that fought to get laws changed. And that's why I, uh, God has me in the lane that I'm in now to affect policy change, because we can't change people's hearts. But we can create policy that's gonna change the people's hearts.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for that, those, those words of wisdom. And I just want to thank, uh, State Representative Tony Exum for doing the work that he's doing, um, in that political arena. So when you, when you ask, Kay, um, you know, what can we do? Um, uh, Dr. Granger talked about anger, right? And, and, and James Baldwin is somebody, I, I've read a lot of his stuff, right? So one of the things he says about anger, and it's always resonated with me, right? It's like, if you are a relatively conscious black person in this country, you are enraged all the time. You gotta be. If you're conscious of what's happening right now, even before we're on TV, you gotta be incredibly pissed off. But, but you can't get anything done if you mad all the time. So you have to channel, you have to channel that anger and put it to work. Um, you know, we were talking earlier, Kay, about, um, you made some, some, some geek references to, you know, just Star Wars Ringtones and The Matrix. So I'm sure you're aware with, um, I don't know which Blade movie it was, but something bad happened to one of the characters, and Blade told this character to get up, and the person was upset and like crying and like sad. He's like, "Use it, use it," and get up and like do something with that anger. It's like I always hear Blade's voice in my head whenever I see something that gets me upset. When I saw George Floyd and I saw Trayvon, and, you know, I was really young when Rodney King happened, but I was dealing with my own stuff in Georgia. Um, you know, I, I, I hear that voice telling me to use it. And, and we can't get tired. I know it's exhausting.
Yes.
You know, doing the work that we have to get done and, and living outside of our comfort zone all the time. But we can't afford to be tired, because if we do, we're gonna die. And I've got three children and a beautiful wife, and I don't have time to die. I don't have time for them to die. So I have to continue this work so that they stay alive and that my future generations can stay alive as well. It's, it's not just about me, it's about all of us. So, you know, one of the things that, um, Representative Exum was talking about was, um, those, those pillars, those pillars of justice. And he made a point of education, you know, education. I, I can't, I can't stress enough how, how important that is to read. You know, there was a time in our history in this country where it was outlawed for us to read, and there was a purpose to that. And I think every black person should be obligated to read the Willie Lynch letter. You should read that. Now, it took me two years to read it. It's like thirty-something pages. Took me two years to get through, and I read it on a flight from here to Key West to go do some work. And I cried for a good thirty minutes after I got done reading it. But what it tells you is it lets you know the diabolical psychological warfare that was set up as soon as we got here. And one of the things that always stuck out in my mind that Woody Lynch said was, um, he was telling the slave owners, like, "You gotta stop hanging your slaves. You gotta stop cutting they feet off when they run, man. You messing up good merchandise. Stop doing it." I walked past a couple rotten bodies on the way here. Stop doing that. What you, what you need to do, if you listen to what I'm telling you, my, my, um, my methods will work for generations in the future. If you just do what I'm saying. And after you read this letter and you look at everything that's happening right now with us and in this country, like, you, you see it. It's so clear. Your, your thing with The Matrix, like you took the pill. Like, you're, you're outside of the box now. You see it. And, and when you see it, you have to act on it. So another thing that Woody Lynch talked about, um, he talked about anomalies. So he said, you know, don't worry about your slaves running away. Like, that's not the issue. The issue is every now and then, one of your slaves, you can call them, say, you call them, you know, niggers, it's like, dude, one of them people will, uh, wake up. They're gonna become conscious and see if there's a system that is keeping them oppressed. Dude, you need to look out for those people. So when you see those, you need to nip that in the bud as soon as you can, because then they start waking other people up. So now we're in twenty-twenty, and we have a ton of anomalies. Barack Obama was an anomaly. Everybody on this call right now is an anomaly, according to, to Willie Lynch. So we have to keep awakening our people so that they can fight. Because if you don't, if you don't know what you're fighting against, you can't, you can't destroy it. And, and the education piece, like our education system, dude, they have, they have taken out so much. Like, I, I'm looking at, you know, our, our, our white brothers and sisters, you know, that are like, "Oh, my gosh, I didn't know about Tulsa." You know, think the HBO and the Watchmen series, that first fifteen minutes of that show, you get to see the Tulsa massacre. It was very vivid, and I love that they did that. But, you know, that, that's history that you didn't get in school. In school, you're gonna find out slavery was like picking cotton and the occasional whooping. They don't tell you about rape plantations. They don't tell you about the tobacco and the rice. You know, they don't tell you about, like, all the horrific, you know, and, and then slavery was over, right? So then everybody's like, "Oh, Juneteenth," you know, you found out late that slavery was over. That ain't in the history books. And then they don't tell you about the terrorism, the domestic terrorism that started as soon as slavery was over. I mean, it was going on during, but dude, it changed forms after the Civil War. And we've been dealing with that terrorism for a long time. And some of those terrorists are in our police force. Some of those terrorists- And we've been dealing with that terrorism for a long time. And some of those terrorists are in our police force. Some of those terrorists are in our political system. Some of those terrorists are making rules that the rest of us have to abide by and they don't care. And sometimes they rear their ugly head and, you know, you really have to be blind not to see them. And then we get to the civil rights movement. What'd it tell you in school? Martin Luther King, Rosa Parks, boycotts. You know, Civil Rights Act and, and kumbaya, we're done. We're done now. It's like, dude, we're in the civil rights movement right now in twenty twenty. It never stopped. It never stopped. So you know, us being able to, to, uh, I, I don't know how to fix the educational system, but we have to find a way to make sure that that history gets taught. And to Dr. Granger's point, um, we can't wait for society to take care of us, cause they, they may not. So what are we doing in the meantime? We send our kids to school and they're not learning about stuff. So when they come home, we gotta teach them. My father sat me down the summer before I went to sixth grade and showed me the entire Eyes on the Prize series. Let me tell you how traumatizing that was for me. So I went to sixth grade and dashikis, my big wooden African chain. And you know, like I, I was, I was in a headspace. Um, but I'm, I'm glad he did that. And there's a lot of history in that series on PBS. So I'm gonna see if I can't work with our, um, our local Rocky Mountain PBS people. I know them, Carrie McKee. I'm gonna come see you, my sister. Um, we can't do something to elevate that Eyes on the Prize series so people can start getting educated as to our history. Cause they don't know. They don't know it. Cause they weren't taught it. We weren't taught it. So if you're not learning it at home, we don't know it. And then, and, and then people that aren't black, what, what incentive do they have to have to know our history? Who cares? Every president has looked like you except one, you know? Um, so yeah, I'm, I'm gonna stop right there.
Alright, so I'm gonna tie this off real fast. Like I said, this, this is just one week. We got, we got plenty of weeks. If we didn't touch on something that you guys would like to speak on, put it in an email. Let me or Dee know. We'll get you guys in here next week again or the week after, so we can air it out. I, I, I love this and I, I appreciate all the wise words that you guys are dropping right now. But to close it off, to tie this thing off, if we, if you could tell somebody one thing to do, what you, if you not tell them, suggest, uh, gi- give them a, a jewel, you know? What would that be to start change, to be changed going for tomorrow? If they could do something, to, I, I, I think I'll probably already asked you this question. But what if I got off of this call today and I wanted to do something after here? Go out tomorrow and do something. What would you suggest that I do?
Because he got to, um, another town hall to do. Go ahead.
I appreciate that, cause I gotta get off the, the call here in just, just a few minutes. But I, I would, I would go back to, uh, the pillars of justice I was talking about. And I would tell the people, especially the young folks, that be a pillar of justice where you are. And whatever circumstance, you know, whether it be your job, whether it be school, whether it be in the community, be a pillar of justice where, where you are. And, and the last thing I would say is that the, the, the images that you see, uh, on, on TV and on, on cell phones and on videos and whatnot, that, that caused you to, to become angry and become, become mad. That's understandable. But we can't stay that way. It's okay to get angry. It's okay to get upset. But we can't stay that way. We've got to, we've gotta take that. We've got to, uh, um, um, take that and into our, into our heart, into our brain. And so, Kay, what did I learn from this and what can I do? How can I turn this anger into something more constructive in, in my community? That's what I would say.
Awesome.
And thank, thank you brothers for the time, man. I, I really appreciate it.
Man, thank you for being here.
Absolutely. God bless you and take care.
Bless you.
Thank you, thank you.
Anyone else?
I, I would say, uh, i- i- I would say first two, two things and they're intertwined is, 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 is that, is that L word and that's L O V E. Love yourself. Love yourself. Because we have been conditioned to not love ourselves. Love yourself to the extent of breathing. You know, uh, this COVID nineteen story is an allegory, uh, of the, of the black life experience in America. And it's a disease that attacks one's, uh, 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 ability to breathe while exacerbating the, the, the health and the mental health disparities and, and contribute to high, higher mortality rates. And so, uh, I was telling the client today, this client was just frazzled, frazzled. And I had to stop. I had to just stop the session and do a four square breathing exercise to, just to breathe. Because we, we don't even breathe like we should breathe, you know, because we, we, we carry this tension. We don't even expand our lungs. You know, and, and so I know that sounds crazy, but when we, when we love ourselves enough to say, look, I'm more important than even the issues. I'm, I'm more important than all of this, you know? I have to take, I have to break away and, and love myself enough to like, okay, I need to breathe. That way I can restore, I can replenish, and then I can get back in the race. And so I know it's difficult for all of us and we all, we've all been waiting to exhale. But I'd say to, to every African American, yeah, that's, that's, that's what we crying out for. You know, we, we, we've been crying. We can't breathe. I can't breathe. Now is the time to breathe.
Deep breath. Um, so to answer your question, what can you go out and do right now? Um, hop online and look up the El Pumar Foundation and find out what the Black Advisory Council is and go to the meetings. There's four of them a year. That is your pathway to get on to the boards and commissions in this town that don't have your voice. I'm in a lot of rooms where I'm the only black person in there. And you know, that's a, that's a, that's a large weight to carry. And I'm okay carrying it, but I don't need to carry it forever. I like to have some more people come in. That's usually why I'm able to get in those spaces. So I can bring more diversity of thought and voices into a room. So you know, get involved in your community. Starts with you. Get involved. Don't, don't be afraid. I know it, I know it is, is nerve wracking to, to go in a room and you the only black person in there. But dude, go in there anyway. Because when you are uncomfortable, that is your growth area. Okay? That's not me. That's Jay, that's John Maxwell, alright? So you know, that's your growth space. So get comfortable with being uncomfortable. Because like I said before, your lives depend on it. You have to do it. And the black images in the media, keep doing your good work. If you're out there doing good work, keep doing it. Come contact me. Let me know what you're doing. You know, there are brothers and sisters who are, you know, um, large partly like involved in, in our media, in our community. So, and, and they have ways, like, you know, you know, brother Dee, like you, you got me involved here with iHeartRadio, man. Like there's a lot of people who are, are doing work. There's different layers of work. So there's people out there protesting. I got three kids. My wife is actually military. I can't be in the streets protesting. I can't do that right now. But I can be here at my ground zero and be pulling strings in the back for some of us to be able to get opportunities. So I don't care what you do to get involved, but you should not be sitting on the sideline doing nothing. I need you up doing something. Get up, get out and get something. That's not me. That's goodie mob. That's old school. Don't spend all your time, you know, try to get high. Like, we gotta get out, do something, man. So, um, it's time to work. Let's get to work.
Man, I appreciate you guys. Wise words from some real, you guys are, are real pillars in the community. I, I, I found some today. I, I've met some face to face, well, face to computer, whatever, today, man. I appreciate you guys being here before I go, before I go. So this thing is pre-recorded. How do you feel if we did this another day live and let people comment and talk in the, uh, comments below? You think that would be something cool?
Let's do it, dude.
Yep, I think it's beneficial. Get people involved and, and people, it, it gives people who, who normally don't have a voice, it gives them a voice. Everyone needs to speak out. Everyone needs a voice. And so I think that would be, I think that'd be amazing if, if, if we can do that.
Yeah. And to your, to your corporate leadership who may end up watching this, this cast. Um, if, if you folks are, are worried about any of the content or anything that somebody might say, do we need to capture all of that? Because all of that is the voices of the people. Those are all your listeners and at least all the people that wanted to tune into this. So some people that tune in live will be on the right side of the argument, which is great. We want those people. We want those advocates and those allies. Some people think that we're making all this up and they'll look at Black Lives Matter the way they looked at it the first time, like it's some evil conspiracy. You know, and that's fine. I want them voices in here too. So people can see that we still have those folks out here that don't get it. And that will give us a barometer on the work that we still have to do out here. So all voices are welcome. All welcome. Let's do this. Let's do it.
You guys are awesome, man. Hey, I, I so appreciate you guys being here for round two of the town hall. Be the voice, be the change meeting. Don't worry. I'm gonna get you guys back in here, alright? I'm gonna get you guys back in here. Hey Dee, I appreciate you for being my co-host and helping me put this thing together. Is there anything you wanna say before we go?
I just wanna say thank you for, uh, coming out and, you know, I had a good time. I'm learning too. Even though I'm trying to put in my work in the way I put in my work in, but you know, y'all's inspiration for me too.
Yes, you guys are, man. Yes, you guys are. Oh, before we go, uh, give them your social. Is there anything? What are you guys up to? How can they get ahold of you? Something like that.
So look up the, uh, Colorado Springs Black Business Network. Uh, we're on Facebook. Also tune into My Black Colorado. Um, tune into that as well. Also tune into the Rotary Club of Colorado Springs. So if you're looking to come move some mountains and, and do some work and, and be the voice that we need, uh, come in there. This is your tribe, man. And you know, we're, we're, we're trying to change some things. So come on in, come on into that group too. And if you're worried about getting hacked, come check us out at Firm IT Solutions so you can get some cyber security.
And if you feel that you have been wronged, I'd like to invite you to, uh, the, the Pike's Peak Southern Christian Leadership Conference where the president is, is Deacon Henry Allen. I'm the chief of staff over there. So I wanna invite you guys over there. We need, we need more black men active. Also too, I wanna direct your attention to the website, W W W, W W W, uh, A B, A D P S I. That's A B S I dot org. That is the, uh, uh, um, Association for Black Psychologists. They're, 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 they're on the front line of, of social justice.
Awesome. This is just round two. Uh, I'm sorry.
Well, if, uh, says, uh, Tony Exum Senior's not on there, I'm gonna give you his website. If you guys wanna get in contact with, um, Tony, you got the website, TonyExum.com. And if you wanna, uh, contact State Representative, you can contact him there. And he's also on Facebook. But I wanted to give his out too, since he wasn't here to give it.
Dope. Good job, Dee. Hey, I appreciate you brothers, man. This is just week two. We got a long, we got more weeks to go. I promise you, we gonna get you guys back in here. Uh, this is the town hall meeting. Thanks, everybody for being a part of this. Peace.
Peace.